Meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order.
We don't have any.
No audio. The May 24th, 2016 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. By the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off their electronic device or put them on vibrator.
Like you, Mr. James. We'll follow your lead.
That's amazing. Perfect timing, guys. Actually, I was testing you guys.
We needed a laugh.
Actually, I was testing you guys, so I just want y'all to know that. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the boards on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County's, uh, Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentation to the board is limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board meeting regarding a regular agenda item or matters in which the board customarily take action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete the lime green form. This form must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. These procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
This is Nancy Stacy, District One.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District Two.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District Four.
Here.
Ms. Jessica King, District Five.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District Three.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Ms. Megan Magamal, Take Stock in Children Program Director for the Public Education Foundation, please introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good afternoon, School Board members, and thank you Superintendent Tomlin. I am happy to represent Take Stock in Children, which is a program of the Public Education Foundation. We provide scholarships, mentors, and hope to local deserving low-income youth who have the desire and the potential to go to college but not necessarily the financial means. We have over two hundred current high school students in Marion County's Take Stock Program. We are selecting forty-seven new eighth graders tomorrow evening, and our graduating class is the size of fifty, the largest in the history of Take Stock since nineteen ninety-six. The two young ladies here this evening with us represent the graduating class. They not only will be getting a scholarship through our Take Stock Program, but they are two of only six students statewide selected to be Leaders for Life through Take Stock. And what this means is that they will each receive up to forty thousand dollars for their college education to make sure that there are no financial obstacles for them to achieve their higher degree. So I am proud to present Alyssa Quick from Vanguard High School and Mary Green from MTI for the pledge. Thank you.
Please stand with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Hi, my name is Alyssa Quick. I just wanted to share a couple words about what Take Stock has meant to me. When I was growing up, my mom always like enforced strict grades into me. I was never allowed to get anything below a B. She scared the crap out of me until that was, you know, the only thing that I got. But so college was always, I would always go to college. That's what she said. She said, "No matter what, you're gonna go to college." She told me that over and over again, and she just made sure that I knew exactly how important college was. How I was going to pay for it, though, was a subject that never really came up because we wasn't, we weren't really sure. My dad was, got sick when I was really young, and he wasn't able to work, and my parents were divorced, so my mom was now a single mom who had to raise two children on her own. But with Take Stock and with the mentoring program and as well as with Leaders for Life, I will be attending Florida State next year with not only all of my tuition paid for but all of my living expenses, including everything from what computer I'll use, to the food that I'll eat, to where I'll live and everything else. And with that, I'll also probably be able to study abroad with the extra scholarship money as well. So it's not just limited to my schooling, but actually activities that I'll be able to do outside of school as well. So anyway, that's all because of Take Stock.
I know we have Judy sitting there, and Judy, you have to say something about it.
Thank you, Mr. James, and you know that each year I come and do a foundation update here at the School Board Work Session, and I am incredibly proud of our Take Stock Program, especially under the direction of Ms. Megan Magamal. Megan has really taken our program forward in leaps and bounds, and you can see an example of the kind of fantastic student that we recruit into the program, the kind of fantastic student that is, we are proud to have represent Marion County Public Schools. And I can tell you that all the other sixty-six counties in the state are really jealous that we have two Leaders for Life. They were stopping us on the street in Tallahassee and saying, "How did you get two? How did you get two?" And last year, we had one, which was our very first Leader for Life from Marion County. So we're very excited, and I believe, Mary, where are you going to school?
I'm going to Florida State as well.
Oh, so two Seminoles are going.
Ely, did you hear that?
I'm very glad you're going to college. You might wanna transfer over to Florida when you wanna get into medicine or something, you know, that, but Florida State's a good place to start, okay?
No, but maybe if we play our cards right, one day these girls will come back to Marion County and be a, continue to be a part of our community. Thank you.
I'd like to say something, Mr. James.
Okay.
I, I would like to also say something. You know, we have some really great things going on here. We, Mrs. Anetti does a great job, Ms. Magamal, you know, it's, there are things in every district that's great, and I believe that the work that you ladies do probably is right up there at the top. You know, for a parent of an adopted child who worked hard to get her here from another country, I can really appreciate those who help children who are disadvantaged, who have, you know, great moms who are just doing all they can do. And I just wanna thank Ms. Anetti and you, Ms. Magamal, and God bless you two girls, and I wish you all the best and all the safety that we can put an umbrella protection over you. And thank you for representing us and making us proud. Come back and give us a report.
Mrs. Stacy, I'd like to just let you know that Mary was also adopted. It's her family.
Really?
So there, you have that in common.
We got, we got our baby when she was a baby from El Salvador, and she was just a blessing. Today, she's an engineer graduate from the University of Florida. So, thank you.
Judy, I just wanna say this while you're here. I had an opportunity to be, to attend the Education Foundation meeting this morning, and once again, I'd like to commend you and the superintendent and all, all the people that work to make the foundation one of the best in the state of Florida. Again, thank your job. Well done.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent.
Board members, with the exception of Items C-12 and C-27, which have been withdrawn entirely, I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 24th, 2016 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
A move.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. King. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 7th, 2016 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, the April 12th, 2016 School Board Meeting, the April 21st, 2016 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, April 26th, 2016 School Board Meeting? May I have a motion and a second?
A move.
Second.
It was so moved by Ms. Ely, second by Mrs. Boynton. It's good to hear that voice again, Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. I will now ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rule governing person who will wish to address the board tonight. Mr. Lake.
All right, thank you, Mr. James. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, Section 286.0114 of the Florida Statutes, School Board has adopted procedures for public speakers who wish to speak tonight regarding one of tonight's agenda items or on a matter relating to school district operations. School Board has adopted these procedures to ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to speak and be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table near the door to this room. As Chairman James told you earlier, public speaker forums are located on the table adjacent to the boardroom door. The completed forums were due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 PM. Mr. James will call tonight's speakers prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt of forums by the school board's assistant. Now, based on any time considerations, the school board by a majority vote may decide to limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten those presentation times, move public comment time to a different position on tonight's agenda, or eliminate the public comment time for this meeting altogether and reschedule it at a future time. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker is allowed five minutes of time. If there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice. To complete his or her comments, speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity, of course, are strictly prohibited. Unsolicited commercial solicitations are also prohibited. School Board may on its own initiative request informational presentations on matters involving the Marion County school system. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding any discipline matter will have an opportunity to do so at that time. Speakers may use handouts or audiovisual presentations, but only if they are provided to the board assistant at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting and have a total length of five minutes or less. Only a student's parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is strictly prohibited. Thank you very much for your attention to these requirements, and, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Brenda, who do we have tonight?
Helen Hamel. Helen Hamel, 3445 Southeast Highway 42, Summerfield, Florida, 34491. Good afternoon and good evening, actually, I should say. It's almost time for that sun to go down. I'm coming back to visit with you guys after my presentation at our, mine just went blank on the date, I believe it was the April 25th work session, from Marion's United Testing Task Force. I did mention that we were developing that survey, and I had asked for your assistance. I sent you a survey last night. I did get a chance to speak with Ms. Dudley right before I got here, that's why I'm running a little bit late. She did recommend some tweaks and corrections, so I do have the updated survey with her tweaks and adjustments here. Feel free to compare the two, and if you should see fit, that you like one better than the other, just let me know, okay? And my task force will take that into advisement. But we are here to ask you for your assistance. We're under a little bit of a time crunch, 'cause as we know, school lets out pretty quickly. And I would really like to get this survey out to teachers before they leave for summer vacation, because once teachers leave for summer vacation, we've lost them for two months. Rightfully so. They deserve their vacation, but they are not thinking about school. So I'd request if we can get this distributed by the end of the week, hopefully that would give them plenty of time on Tuesday, which is a teacher work day, to answer the survey and get it back to us. Of course, during non-student contact times, so that it's not taken away from their classrooms. But I'm going to send the survey around, and if you've got any questions and comments.
We had, we had an opportunity to review this, as we said we would help them. Mrs. Superintendent, do you have any?
I have not seen this. Ms. Hamel sent me a note that said she was going to come back and present something to you. I know that she and Executive Director Dudley have not been able to get together. Both have busy schedules, and they finally did talk late this afternoon. My, my concerns or our concerns that were shared with Ms. Hamel and that, I think with some different wording, and I don't know what the new wording is, we could glean some helpful information.
Yeah, I'll send it down the row if you guys.
Okay, and, and that would be best for us. And again, I don't know what is the best time for a survey, and Ms. Hamel's already mentioned, yes, there is a time crunch, but I guess some information is better than no information.
We'd, we'd prefer as much as possible to get some information so that we have the summer to manipulate and look at the data and actually analyze it and then come back.
I did have an opportunity to talk to Ms. Dudley. Ms. Dudley, would you stand up for a minute? I, I spoke with her this afternoon, and she feel that we, come on, that we could accommodate, there was no problem with the information that was provided?
I'm not seeing the final version, because she was typing as we were talking, but what we talked about, we both agreed with, so pending the actual semantics of the word, then yes, we're with support.
My question is, I'm gonna ask Ms. Dudley, stick around now, what is the best? We've got three days of school left, we got one day with teachers after that. Have we talked with our technology folks? I'm assuming this is not a paper-based survey?
It is not. It is web-based, which you would need to distribute an email link, or a, a web link, and they could go to the website, answer the survey right there.
Being the technology genius that I am not, Ms. Dudley, does that sound familiar to you, that we can cooperate and, and work with Ms. Hamel and, and coordinate this? Okay, I, I don't know whether board needs to look at this survey or not. Historically, I believe that this is similar to a survey that a neighboring county had used. It gleaned some information. It asked the teacher or the survey completer to identify themselves by what they do, and then it goes into asking of what value those particular assessments might be to that teacher. I think, and Ms. Dudley and Ms. Hamel, you can help me out here, I think that you're gonna get what I would perceive to be some pretty raw data, and then you're going to have to follow up with a different kind of survey or some kind of assessment. I don't think you're gonna get something that's gonna be useful in of itself. Is that pretty accurate, or?
We, we anticipate to get a very universal trend, and if we're seeing specific trends for one question or one comment or one concern that teachers are having, well then follow it up with a secondary survey, either targeted maybe at a specific group of teachers, a specific content area, or a specific grade band, or at a specific comment. If it's, if it's strictly state mandated assessments that we get the most comments and feedback on, then that's what our follow-up survey will be on.
Board, I have, I have no problem with doing the survey whatsoever. I'm just trying to make it as, as efficient as possible for, to glean the best information possible, and we'll certainly work with this, get the survey out, and, and follow up with whatever we can, and we'll share the information with you as we get it.
Okay. Just one thing now, we're looking at trying to get this out this week, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Ely?
I just have a question. How are you going to convey to the principals to, to make sure that the teachers fill out the survey? Our ideal circumstance would be a district-wide emailing coming, perhaps not from myself, 'cause Helen Hamel's not a very well-known name, but from any of the school board members, Mr. Superintendent, your, your staff secretary, Ms. Flotketter is a well-known name in our district, and I think someone will answer that email. I can provide you with a draft of the email we had in mind, pretty much just asking teachers to reply to this survey in order to give us their feedback. I know you preface it with why you want them to, to do this, that what, what, what information you hope to gain from this, and I think that will help them feel more. Correct, yes. Part of that. Yes.
I'm going, since Ms. Hamel's already been working with Ms. Dudley, I'm gonna ask her to, to make that connection right here, and we will get that survey out. I believe we have the capability to send it to teachers specifically. They would, so instead of sending it to a principal and having them, or asking them to, to send it out to everybody else, we'll actually send it to every recipient in our, in our mailing address.
I have a question for Ms. Hamel. I did have a chance to look at what you sent earlier this afternoon, and it was, well, first, is, are you comfortable with this, what you're presenting to us now?
I'm comfortable with the changes we made. It was mainly semantics, breaking some of the statements to make them a little bit more narrowly banded, so that we're not gonna get as big of a chunk of data and can more easily be analyzed.
Okay, so you, you're.
I'm comfortable with the changes. I, I really, there's not a huge change there. It's mainly, you know, small tweaks, but I feel like they will all help us.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
You know, and I'd like to thank you, Ms. Hamel, for pointing to all this work. I don't think people understand until they've been a volunteer, and many of us have been volunteers, and goodness knows, I volunteered for years. And volunteers are the most unappreciated people sometimes, because, you know, you're looking for results fast, and sometimes there's just resistance, there's just this resistance. And thank you for pushing through all the walls and continuing to move forward with your meetings and the people that have helped. It's just not fun to do this. It's really not fun. We've, we've got a great group that I'm working with. We're all passionate about the topic. And thank you, and Ms. Dudley, I look forward to you helping her get this out real quick the way she likes it to go, because I totally trust her to have it the way it needs to be. Thank you again, and I encourage the teachers, and I wouldn't mind if our name was used, that the school board is supporting this, this document to, to help. And I will go ahead and, and ask, and I know we've got some loyal viewers out there, this will be live on our Facebook page, so they can access it there as well. So we're, we're gonna try to get as much data as we can in the short amount of time. Should we find that we just cannot get conclusive data, we can attempt to resubmit it after the new year, but we'd really like to have the time over the summer to be able to come back with some concrete data and recommendations and a concrete follow-up survey, you know.
Okay. What I, what we've got is Ms. Dudley will get the information out. Board, I heard, I heard Mrs. say she would like to put your name on it, that's fine, but I'm being honest with you, I would like for it to be one focal point.
That is fine.
And I would love for us to get that data back and for us to do something with it.
No, I said the school board would support it, not one certain person. I said I would like.
Okay.
You to reflect that the school board supports what you're doing, and we're looking forward to seeing the results. I didn't say anything about one person.
Okay, the school board, if that's.
Do you have a problem being on it as a school board member?
Yes, Stacy, it's already over. Thank you. It's, it's done now. Okay, so we got, we got a plan, is that right? Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you.
Brenda, who do we have?
Patrice Barnett.
And I do not need to speak. I was telling backup speakers you couldn't make it for awards day.
Gotcha, okay. And that's all I have.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the education plan survey recommendation for the physical year 2016, 2017, due the physical year 2020 to 2021, attached under Item C-19 prior to the, on the meeting, and with the exception of Item C-12 and C-27, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, and Item C-29 and Item C-31, which have been placed on a regular agenda for discussion. May I have a motion and a second?
A move.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Ely and second by Ms. Boynton?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boynton. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. I can't get back to my phone here. Mrs. Stacy, do you need for me to vote for you?
It a motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the renaming of Community Technical and Edu, Adult Education Center to Marion Technical College? May I have a motion and a second?
So move, absolutely.
So moved by Ms. Ely and second by Mrs. Boynton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the revised 2015 to 2016 non-representative salary schedule? May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Boynton. Okay, Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item for discussion?
I did. I had myself some notes, I wrote down here about it. I spoke with Ms. Crisalka probably often on an hour today about this, and there's just, I don't remember ever doing anything like this, we just had absolutely no discussion at a workshop, or no discussion at a closed meeting, or any kind of discussion about a salary. We meet, I mean, the, you know, with the union organizations, we meet tirelessly with them, and, you know, the board just gets this document that basically says this is the salary change, and these are the positions that we've upgraded from number, you know, they were at this forty-six, now they're gonna be at this sixty pay grade, and probably what concerns me also is the principals, everybody in the administrative salary gets a 1.5 salary increase, percent, salary increase, which I have no problem with, but I think that's, I would love to give them more, except the principals. The principals will move on to a new type of a salary schedule that's much like what the teachers have, that goes up in three-hundred-dollar increments. So they will be placed there, say, say the principals' new salary is eighty-one thousand one hundred, but the salary increment that they have for that spot is, you know, eighty-one hundred, three, eighty-one thousand three hundred. They would go from one hundred to the three, and so they'd get just a little bit more, which isn't a lot when you're looking at that size salary, it's a small percentage, but still it's more than what everybody else is getting, even if it's a wee little bit. And the board didn't have a chance to try to look at to see how we could maybe take an overall of what the administration's getting that gives them that extra little half a percent or quarter of a percent raise or whatever, and kinda get some type of figure to also make that fair for everyone else. I just don't think it's right that the administration gets any percent higher salary increase, 'cause it is on the percentage basis than the rest of the employees, so I had a problem with that. I also had a problem, and I, and I would really, would have liked to have had a workshop where we could collaborate a little bit, because I understand from Ms. Crisalka that a couple of the board members have gone in and spoken with her about this salary schedule, so it's been kinda stove-piped to each one of us. I don't know what kinda questions you had, you don't know what questions I had, and anybody that's asking, we don't know, because it was just kinda stove-piped through there to us, and I don't know what everyone's concerns were. And given the fact that we, and, and another big concern that I had, these, these employees that are supposed to, these multi-tier employees, I was sold on this, I guess, I mean, if I, I never really was sold on it, but I understood it was to help the guidance counselors. This was gonna take pressure off them. Now, as I'm looking at this, and looking at the job description, and looking at this multi-tier position, it almost looks like another boss. Like now the guidance counselors all have just a new boss, where, you know, maybe they needed some clerical help, or they needed some stuff, and, and, you know, and I don't know if they understand what they're getting completely. I also understand we're only gonna do, right now, a pilot with one employee. However, once we put it in the staffing plan, once we put it in the staffing plan, they can tell us we're gonna do one. However, once we put it in the staffing plan, once we put it in the staffing plan, they can tell us we're going to do one, but if they decide after one week it's working, they can fill all six positions. Then I ask about, okay, what is this about? And, and Mrs. Crisalka, we had a great conversation about it. I mean, she was, you know, she answered all my questions, and I just didn't always agree with her answers, but she helped, you know, she was guiding me along. And she said, well, Ms. Stacy, this is also to help the guidance counselors. They can move up into this position. Well, then I said, so are only guidance counselors going to be able to apply for this position? Um, well, no, not only guidance counselors. So, okay, so can teachers or anybody? Well, yes. If a teacher's got the, the master's degree in the two different areas, leadership, or I guess coun-, whatever, social counseling, or whatever the other one was, Ms. Crisalka, I don't remember. Well, but yeah, so we could put a teacher in there. It's never even been a guidance counselor or a dean into this position. And I just don't know how that's going to help our guidance counselors when we've got somebody overseeing them that's never been worked in that position. I just feel like I don't understand what the rush is to push this through. In the past, we have worked with our unions for an entire year. We still have a union contract not settled from last year. And so we have plenty of time. The school year hasn't even started. The new year, you know, hasn't gotten cranked up yet to, um, to make these raises and everything. And we, I just feel like I don't understand what the push was, that we couldn't at least have a thirty-minute discussion at a workshop meeting so that I don't have to go into the community and say, yep, I rubber-stamped something that I don't even understand. And so that, those are my concerns with it.
Ms. Superintendent?
I'll address a few of those, and I'll try to summarize what you have, so we can have some discussion. First of all, one of the latter things that you said, Ms. Stacy, the, you mentioned something, why is it a rush to get these salaries established for next year? This is not for next year. This is for the current year. But this is for the past year, the funds that have already been budgeted. I'll bring to your attention and remind the board members that with the Marion Education Association, you had no work session. We brought the contract to you after working with them, and you approved that. With MESP, we brought that to you. There was no work session after we negotiated with MESP. The only reason we've discussed the IU-PAT in a closed session with you is because, you know, we have not been able to come to some kind of an agreement. It has been my opinion, and the opinions of many superintendents before me, that you do everything you can in your power to settle with the other unions, and then non-represented employees get what's left over. I don't mean to say that in any kind of a negative fashion, but that's what we do. This, uh, the MEA contract, I, it was a two-year deal. We're at the second end year of a two-year deal there. That was two to three percent, I think, if you were to round it off. The MESP was close to three percent. That was for this year and next year. It was a two-year deal. IU-PAT, as you know, we're working on something there. And this was even a much less, at only one and a half percent. And you've seen the documents that we shared with you before in reference to how, over the course of the eight or ten years, how teachers have gotten X percent, MESP X percent, IU-PAT X percent, and non-represented, and administration, a much lower percentage, and you've seen those documents. I'd be happy to, to address things. I, I heard, I think, three specific issues. One was, uh, in reference to the principal salary schedule. We're required by law to come in and do a different salary schedule for pay-for-performance. Uh, Mrs. Crisalka has worked on that. She's going to begin to make her way up. If you have specific questions for you, as is Ms. Boston Ellis, they'll come up and help answer those. That, that's one issue that I heard. Uh, no, I don't know what other board members. I have talked to Mrs. King, was in yesterday for her scheduled meeting. Mr. James for his scheduled meeting with me, and they had questions, and I know they've had telephone calls. And we don't, by, as you know, we don't poll you. We don't talk, because that's not an appropriate thing to do. But if you want to ask questions of, of these two folks, we can certainly do that. And the third issue, Ms. Stacy, I don't want to confuse that, because you have pulled another item, and that is the job description for the MTSS specialist, which this board has approved after going through a work session with Janet Weldon, and looking at guidance council responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera. Now, you've approved the staffing plan, and Ms. Stacy, you are correct in that we are recommending, we are going to pilot this program, hopefully with your approval. We've already approved the staffing plan. We think it's a great concept for us. And yes, we can add additional persons to the, that are already approved by the staffing plan. However, I think you can know for the last three years, and years before this, this, this administration has been very conservative about adding positions and paying for positions. I'd rather than be on the staffing plan and not fund them. And so, so we'll, we'll kind of do, do the MTSS specialist last if we can, because that really goes into the next, next item that you pull, which is actually the job description.
It really doesn't, because that's one of my concerns on this, was-
Well, we'll, we'll have to have a, a different motion, because those are two different-
It's not really the job description. I don't, I mean, Mrs. Crisalka talked about it. I said, yeah, you can pull the job description. My concern was really more for the salary, so that was not-
From a technical aspect, you did. And so we can, we can talk about it now, and then if, once we approve it, or vote again, we'll have to just, we can zip right through it. But Board, I don't know what kind of questions you might have for Mrs. Crisalka and, and Mrs. Boston Ellis.
Ms. Stacy, you have any?
You know, and like I told Ms. Crisalka, the other board members might not have a problem with us not collaborating and talking about some of this. And I do feel more comfortable that we have brought it out into the public, that, um, that we are going to, and that's one reason I wanted it before the school board, that we did talk about piloting one of these employees to see how it works. Um, as long as I understand that we are, because Mrs. Crisalka said, well, if we don't have it, the money and the budget to put it in, well, we don't know yet what we got for the money for the budget, until Ms., until finance gets us to the level, to that level. So therefore, I just want to make sure that when we get to that level, then we don't go, well, Ms. Stacy, we just found the money for the other six employees, and that's because they're in the staffing plan. And so that's my concern.
What I would like to try to reassure you about is the hiring of this person, the MTSS specialist, is going to be done by a panel of employees, including Mark Vianello, Janet Weldon, Matt Lane, um, and others. They're not going to be selecting someone who is not qualified to help our guidance counselors. They're not going to pick someone who doesn't have experience and skills that will allow them to do the job and be a help to our guidance counselors and our schools. I trust their professional judgment in selecting a good person for this position, whether it's one, or three, or seven.
I have a question about the MTSS also, um, because when I'm looking at this, it's a specialist, so of course it means more administration. My concern, and what I was hearing from, um, these work sessions that we had from the guidance counselor, is that they need help. And not necessarily administration help, but just manpower help in the school. Like maybe hire, use that money to hire an extra guidance counselor. I'm not sure they needed someone above them, or an administration position. I think, probably looking back, what I was hearing more of plea of is more manpower, like an extra guidance counselor, or someone to take on that burden. That's what-
This is, this is not an administrative position. It's on the district specialized personnel, um, salary schedule. And it's intended to be a position who will be a resource to all of the schools that are in that feeder pattern.
Great. Okay, so I'll rephrase that. Maybe it's not an administration position, but I'm not sure the schools were asking for a specialist. I think they were asking for manpower. Were you getting manpower out of it, like maybe extra with the guidance?
I heard worker monkeys, you know, they need-
I believe this person is going to be a worker bee, working at a variety of schools to support them. A specialist i- is just a, a word. It, they're not on the instructional salary schedule. They're not part of the MESP bargaining unit. So we have to place them on another salary schedule, and the district support specialized personnel salary schedule is the one that we place them on. But their, their salary is not, um, exorbitant in comparison to what our guidance counselors would be. When you, when you look at their salary on the salary schedule, it's representative of a two-hundred-and-sixty-day employee, as opposed to an instructional salary, which is representative of a hundred-and-ninety-six days. So the difference in the amount has a lot to do with the length of their calendar.
Ms. Stacy?
And, and to that point, these are supposed to be people helping the, the guidance counselors, but yet this is a year-round sal-, this is year-round position. This looks like nothing more to me than an, an administrative position. We can call it what we want to call it. We can plug it in. We're allowed to plug it in wherever we want to plug it in. I mean, you might not call it administration, but maybe I would call it administration. Just don't plug it in under that. But, um, I'm looking at the salary schedule for it, and it's pretty administrative-looking to me. Um, and so, you know, I'm just, this all started because the guidance counselors needed help. And now we've got these possibly up to seven people that will be working all summer, the guidance counselors aren't even there, to help them. And you explained to me, Ms. Crisalka, they would be working with the social services.
The MTSS process does continue throughout the summer for some of our students. Our, our school psychologists are still working during the summer, so they're, they would be able to shepherd that process.
Right.
Um, we do have Mr. McGowan here with a, with a guidance counselor background. He was a guidance counselor. He's now, um, the replacement for Janet Weldon in that area. I don't know if you want him to speak to this issue as to how he sees this MTSS specialist helping our guidance counselors. But he's here, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. McGowan, but he could do that.
Well, my point, Ms. Crisalka, is who's been doing this all the summer before, that all of a sudden we need these seven people to do this? And like you said, we're only going to, we're going to start with one. But usually when we start with one, we end up getting, filling it all. Um, so, I mean, I'm looking at, you know, over half million dollars by the time we pay benefits and, and everything. You're looking at like, you know, when you tag the benefit package on for seven, you're looking at a lot of, you're looking at a lot of dough. And I'm just not sure that we're going to-
The daily rate of pay for the MTSS specialist on step one is two-hundred-and-ten dollars per day. The daily rate of pay for the guidance counselor on step one is a hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars per day. So it's a difference of eleven dollars per day. If we want our experienced guidance counselors, or deans, or behavior analysts, to be willing to come into this position and share their knowledge and their experience with a variety of schools, we have to give them an incentive to want to do that. If they're not going to make any more money than they're already making as a guidance counselor in their school where they are comfortable, what incentive do they have to want to share their expertise with others?
Okay, but when you look at the cert-, at the schedule, look, let's go up about four steps on that schedule, and tell me the guidance counselor's daily rate of pay, and, uh, and this person's daily rate of pay.
I, I don't have that for you, but I do have the top number, and I can give that to you. The top step for the MTSS specialist will be two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars per day. The top step for a guidance counselor would be three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars per day, because our district support specialist salary schedule stops at twelve. There are no more steps after twelve. The instructional salary schedule goes up to roughly thirty-three steps.
I'm not talking, I want to go to twelve years. Twelve years on one and twelve years on the other, because that's how far that step goes.
I, I don't have that information.
You're comparing apples to oranges. You're looking at, because that person that's on that step's going to be getting the annual raises. It's going to change that number. Their step just won't change, but they'll be getting the annual two percent, five percent raises.
Well, when you, when you look at what happens with our non-instructional people-
That's why we needed a workshop.
Take it from, I'll let the superintendent speak, and then I'll entertain the motion.
I'd like, I'd like to address, address the summer issue. And Mrs. Crisalka's already stated that the MTSS process does not stop when school is out. Our psychologists work of the balance of the summer. Students move from elementary school, fifth grade, to middle school over the summer. They move from middle school to high school over the summer, and there is a great deal of coordination of paperwork. We believe that this MTSS specialist, one, and not seven, we want to experiment, make sure that it works appropriately, can help coordinate the efforts of all the guidance counselors at those respective elementary schools, at the respective middle schools, and at the respective high schools, as they process the required paperwork. And we do think that this will benefit guidance counselors and their time spent on the job.
Well, Mr. James, I'd like to comment to Mr. Tomlin.
Let me hold, let me step in for a minute. We have two items that I think are on the board. Okay, and one is the, may I have a mo-, I had a motion on the, on the board for the approval.
I have something to say to the point, to the point, well, point of order.
You're interrupting.
I want to comment on something he said.
You're interrupting.
The psychologists do not work like county.
You, you can make that after I finish this.
You're fixing to make a motion, and I have information, point of order to your motion.
Okay, what I'm looking at is that we have two, we have two items that we're discussing. One is the, uh, the revised 2015 non-representative salary schedule, and that was the one. And then we will come back to the TSA, that's the next one on the board. And Board, if we would take this one off, and if you, uh, we've already discussed the non-representative salary schedule, I would like to call for, or vote on that particular item. And then we'll come back to the TSA item. Yes, MTS. Okay, all in favor of the non-representative salary sched-, the schedule, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, the motion passed of four, uh, one. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the new job classification, classification description for the multi-tiered system of support, MTSS program specialists? May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Borton. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
And I think there's been plenty of discussion on it. Um, I believe that it's not coming, it's not molding out to be what I expected it to be when we were in a workshop. And, um, I think this position still needs a little work done on it. Um, I think when we were in the workshop, I don't even, I don't even know that we understood it was a full-year job. I thought it was kind of like the, I thought it was just, um, backing up the guidance counselors, and kind of when they were there. And like I was sharing with Mr. Tomlin, he said, well, the psychologists work through the summer. Well, up in Lake County, a number of them don't work, the majority don't work in the summer. It's also like a two-hundred-and-twenty cal-, two-hundred-and-twenty day instead of two-seventy or two-sixty year. So, um, you know, we've got all these people working in the summer that some districts don't have working in the summer, and now we got, going to have seven more. And, um, so I just, I, I just, I think this job description just needs some more work, because I feel that if it's something that, that if it's, if it's truly for the guidance counselors, then I believe the guidance counselors should be the one to be able to apply to do this, because they are the most experienced at, um, at this. And it would give them an opportunity to have a full-year job if they wanted to, let, let the guidance counselors apply for this first, because they're the ones that know best what it is that they need, not someone that, like Ms. Crisalka said, that even if a teacher's qualified, and she's got the master's degree and stuff, I mean, they, they could be in the pool. And, um, and granted, we have a team of people that hire them, but I also know we have what I call promised land jobs that sort of flow, you kind of know who's going to get it before it goes through the team, and then it goes through the team, and the person that you heard's going to get it, gets it. So that, call those the promised land jobs. And so, um, I'm just not comfortable, and it's fine, I don't really care how the, you know, if my fellow board members are, are comfortable with this. I just feel that we were misled on what this was going to be. Or maybe at the time we were talking about it, we all understood, Ms. Crisalka was all on the same page. But since it happened, it's kind of evolved into something different than what I understood it was to be.
Ely, or Ms. King?
At this point, I agree with Ms. Stacy. Um, it was kind of presented to us, and then there wasn't much information, kind of like this, um, what we received on our agenda. I would have appreciated probably having a little bit of a workshop and getting a little bit more details. Again, I'm going to reiterate that I'm not sure that, or I'm pretty sure that the guidance counselors weren't asking for another specialist. They're asking for more manpower, extra help in the school, hands-on, maybe two, you know, if the school's, depending on the size, two guidance counselors, so they could, you know, meet with their students, and ha-, conference with them, and know their students. I'm, I, I'm not seeing where a specialist could actually fill that position, so those are my thoughts on that, that position.
Now, are we, are we asking to table this?
Okay, now, are we, are we asking to table this then?
I would like to make a motion to table, um, table the discussion on this new position and let us work on it a little bit.
Okay. Do I have a second on her?
Second.
Second.
Let me get this on here, please. Table for work session discussion?
Yes. Table the job description approval.
Right.
Okay, when can we bring that back?
We have an approval of the job description.
Uh-huh. How does that affect the, the pay, the pay schedule?
We've already, that was the second one. That was the first one we already approved.
But if that position's on there, so that this one is...
Yeah, all of this, uh, table.
That's correct.
Yes.
Um, let me get the June tw, the June board meeting?
Uh, twenty-third, is that it? The next possible time.
June twenty-three work session is our next work session.
Okay, we'll table it to the June twenty-third work session. Okay.
Need to take a vote on the motion?
I'm getting there. I'm sorry, I gotta get the...
To vote on tabling.
Yeah. Okay, finally, now you can vote on tabling. Sorry.
All in favor of tabling, tabling, to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion pass?
There you go, yeah.
Motion pass five zero. Okay. Okay, now, this is, we have this scheduled for the twenty-third, is that correct?
I do have a question, and I'm gonna turn to Mr. Lake for advice on this. Mr. Lake, if, if a motion is tabled, does it not come back at the very next time the board sits as a meeting?
Will you table it to us?
Yeah, I think, isn't that the next meeting?
Well, they won't be able, that's a work session. There won't be an opportunity to vote at that time. I'm asking for a question. I don't know. I thought tabling, you moved it to the very next time. Very next time you had the opportunity to vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, had I known how this vote, that's why I wanted to combine the votes. I would have supported the salary issue, had I known how we were gonna work with this. So at this point, can my vote, can I do anything about it? Is it just, I mean, can I ask for reconsideration of my vote? Because I would vote with the majority.
Yeah, you can do it in the same meeting. You have to do it now.
Okay, I would like to reconsider, now that we've got this issue resolved, now I would like to vote with the majority on the salary issue.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Stacy's asking for correction on it.
Do I do any motion or just change the vote?
I think you'd do another motion on that.
Okay.
Revote.
Yeah, exactly, revote.
On salary schedule.
Need a motion and a second.
So, Mrs. Stacy made the motion. I need a second.
Okay, Ms. Stacy made a motion to revoke, and I need a second.
Second.
It was seconded by Ms. King. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Just a remaining question that was not answered. I don't know whether you've tabled an issue. Normally, tabling goes to the very next meeting. I don't know whether, I, I don't know.
To the next meeting where the board can take official action.
Which would be, Brenda?
The next board meeting? I don't have that in front of me.
It's prior to the work session, is another.
That's prior to the work session.
That's my only question, board. It's just a matter of semantics.
So what about, you can make it to a date certain. You can make it to that board meeting following the thirteenth.
Did you go the June twenty-eighth?
Yeah. You can make it date certain for June twenty-eighth, but that would take another motion.
Okay, sorry. Just wanna get you through this right.
And normally, right.
Okay, now, we've tabled it to the, the June twenty, twenty-eighth.
Twenty-third work session.
Twenty-third work session.
If you want to...
Twenty-third work session.
I'm assuming you could amend that and vote on it on the June twenty-eighth.
June twenty-eight board meeting.
Right.
That would be a technical address, way to address it, I believe.
We don't have a workshop before that. We don't have a workshop.
Yes, ma'am, the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Is that our next workshop?
Yes. We have FSBA conferences during the week of year.
There's actually two work sessions, all right, six twenty-three and also on the thirtieth.
But June twenty-eighth would work after the June twenty-three.
Right.
Okay, so I need a motion in a second for this.
Okay, you have a time to...
You need a motion in a second?
I need a motion and a second.
To table the June twenty-third work session.
I make a motion that we table this, I feel about June twenty, the rework session and June twenty-eight board meeting.
June twenty-eight.
Correct.
Second by Ms. Morenton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pass five zero. May I have a, a motion to approve the following donations? One thousand eight hundred dollars to Bellevue High School from the Florida Thoroughbreds Breeders. Three thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars to Bellevue High School from the Horizon, Horizon Players. One thousand dollars to Bellevue Middle School from Lockheed Martin. One thousand dollars to Emmer Show's Elementary School from Lockheed Martin via the Public Education Foundation. One thousand dollars to Forest High School from Lockheed Martin via the Public Education Foundation. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Forest High School for TV production, many grants from the Public Education Foundation. One thousand dollars to Greenway Elementary School from Lockheed Martin via the Public Education Foundation. Five thousand dollars to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks for Century Link, Clark M. Williams Foundation. Five thousand dollars to Marion Technical Institute from Lockheed Martin via the Public Education Foundation. One thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from CJ Sales and Service Inc. Five thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from SWI Phot, uh, Photographics. May I have a motion and a second? So, so moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mrs. Morenton. And I will let Ms. King thank our people, thank the people for...
Can we vote?
Okay.
Can we vote first?
Yeah. We can vote for it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Can I go ahead? I'd have to wait for the...
Motion pass five zero, Ms. King.
Okay. On behalf of Marion County School Board, we would like to thank our community members for caring enough about our students to provide, not only by person, but your donations monetarily. It means a lot to our students and it just fills in those gaps and needs that sometimes aren't met. So, thank you.
Mrs. Ely, how many, what's the numbers look like?
Twenty-seven thousand forty-six dollars.
Okay, thank you. Meeting reminded, a majority of the board members will be attending the Joint Florida School Boards Association Conference in Tampa, June eighteenth to the, uh, to the tenth. Therefore, the Thursday, June ninth of two thousand sixteen administrative briefing work session is canceled. The next briefing and, next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, June twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, at nine AM. The purpose of the work session is to review Wyominga Park Art and Music Suite preliminary plans and master plan for construction project update, board super, uh, board and superintendent responsibilities, advanced degrees supplement and administrative law judge as it is related, as it relates to students and employees hearing, as well as a revised paralegal job classification description and associate salaries. An attorney-client session will immediately follow the June twenty-third, two thousand sixteen administrative briefing and work session with an anticipating, with an anticipated start time of eleven thirty AM. Committee reports, and we'll start with Ms. Stacy.
Yes, I have a great story. I went to Ward Highlands Elementary to their Go West program that I meant to get the names of the other teachers that were involved. I know that Jamie Bevan, you know, she had a lot to do with putting this entire thing together over at Ward Highlands. And there were a couple of other teachers and shame on me for not getting them. And I'm sorry, I have a very, very ill doggy at home, our sixteen-year-old doggy, probably is being put to sleep as I speak. So, I didn't get to speak to the principal this afternoon to get the other teachers' names, but I'd like to thank them also. The program was incredible. I, I can't believe, you know, the dollars that the community have given us for our music teachers and, and programs like this. I've been to these programs before. This year, I went to one at Shady Hill that was phenomenal. They had a musical. And that was a couple of weeks ago. And then last week to Ward Highlands. And it's different. When I used to go to programs, they've now moved to a level of excellence. They are absolutely flawless. And the, and the, the musical at Shady Hill was, and the Go West program that the kids did, it starts, I learned things from it because I haven't really studied about the old, old west in many, many years. And it starts out talking about the Louisiana Purchase and then how some went by steamboat and some went by locomotive and some went by horseback, all out west, and how they all were looking forward to getting rich and finding gold. And when they got there, wasn't really so much gold to be found, but they found happiness in the, in the beautiful countryside and, and what they had found. And that, that they, and the, the program led the students to teach everyone in the audience that sometimes the beauty is in nature's wonderful scenery and, and stuff, not so much in the gold. And how, and the kids managed to portray that. These students memorized their roles. They didn't have a single student mix up. I could not have gone in there and memorized and spoke like these kids did. It was absolute perfection. And that Ward Highlands Elementary School, I can't wait to see what Jamie Bevan and the gang's gonna do next year. But if this community gets a chance, when you start hearing about these school programs, we have now moved to a level of excellence in these productions. And I thank Ward Highlands and Shady Hill for their programs that they invited me to. Thank you.
Ms. Ely?
We've all attended graduations this week. That was like the big moment of our lives this week. I attended MTI and that was incredible to see all of these students in different graduation color gowns act to their high schools. And I love the way that, um, the, the announcements came of what, what their futures are, what they're planning to do for their future, what kind of scholarships they've gotten, where they plan to work, what certifications they've gotten. And I, I truly believe MTI is, is a, it's not just for the present, but bigger and better in the future. I also attended Hillcrest graduation, and that was beautiful too. The parents and the students were there. And I believe of the sixteen students who graduated, only five are graduating out this, this summer. The rest of them will come back because they can stay there till they're twenty-two. And the last graduation I attended was Bellevue High, which many of my former Shady Hill students were there. That was a beautiful graduation. It was nice and sunny in the morning. Wasn't raining like Friday night. And I think the highlight of that graduation is these kids hugging me, saying, "Mrs. Ely, do you remember me? You, you know, you were my principal." And I'd say, "Oh, yeah, I remember you," like they were ten when I saw them last, you know? But there were about ten, fifteen students who came up and hugged me. And it was, it was a right, really great moment to see them all grown up and, and soon to be very successful in, in college. So, it was a great weekend. I know y'all experienced the same.
Ms. Morenton?
Really had a very, um, uh... I really, really had to, um, I'm, just had, wanted to say how thank you for the, um, um... Excuse me, I mean, it's more a lot of smolder, um, but the graduate, the graduate was very one. And I want to thank you all for that, to say that. Thank you.
Ms. King?
I also attended graduation. I attended North Marion High and it, we weren't wet and it wasn't raining, but it was faltering hot. But the energy and the excitement of these students that are getting ready to embark on the rest of their lives is just contagious. It was fun. And, and Mr. Tomlin was there with us. And I think you were blinded by the sun also, so, but it was a great evening. I also attended Reddit Collier's fifth grade celebration as they're getting ready to go to middle school. And Mr. Lepert, the middle school teacher, was with us and they were funny because they would see him when they'd walk up and they're like, "I can't wait to go to middle school," you know, and he was like, "All right." And I also had the privilege to present two students, but not one, but two different students with a four thousand dollar scholarship to CF. So, that's, that's really nice. I'm sure they're gonna use that. That was awesome. Another presentation I went to was the flag folding program at Ocala Springs Elementary. And we had our Marion County veterans that were actually teaching our students about the American flag and how important it is. And they discussed what the colors meant and the stars. And they also folded the flag that will be retired in June at the flag fold, uh, not the flag folding, at the Flag Day ceremony. And students, they write a little script or something. They do a program and then they'll get awards. And it's a fun day for them. So that was really nice to see that. And also, I want to add that Friday is the last day for our students. And our teachers are the following week. So I just ask that everybody rest up over the summer and come back ready in August, ready to learn. And also, students and teachers, whoever, remember to read. And it's not prescribed reading. It's anything you want, absolutely your choice, and enjoy it. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Lake?
I'd just like to thank each of the board members for your evaluations. And I know they're not fun to do, but I appreciate the time you spent on them. And I can see that you spent a lot of time thinking about your comments and they're very much appreciated. So, just want you to know how much I enjoy working with you. Appreciate it. Also to Mrs. Flutketter for supervising that whole process and getting it done. So, thanks a lot.
Mrs. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman James. And I'd just take a few minutes, board. I want to pass something down to, you have received this document, but I want to refer to it. Also, Mrs. King had, had requested of the board or of, of our administration to provide to her, for her information, a synopsis of the various federal funds that we receive in light of some correspondence and the publicity that's been in the newspaper lately. On the front side, the long page of that, and I apologize because the summary, the total is on the back page. But this is a summary of federal revenue that comes into our district. If you flip it over, you can turn to the top of the right, upper right-hand corner and you see the total of fifty-three-plus million dollars. And this is over a period of five different years. You can see how that has changed. Right below that is the, is a brief summary of the expenditures which we use those federal dollars for. Now, Mrs. King, again, and I appreciate her for coming in for a meeting with me, her scheduled meeting, and she asked for a little more detail. And knowing that a little more detail often takes a little more and sometimes a lot more time, we agree that I would ask the board if this would be something the board is interested in getting is more detail. Now, Mrs. King and I have discussed, we can't get this by tomorrow afternoon, but we can certainly work on this. But what we would do as far as the next level of detail is look at the various federal programs that we have and show you a line item expense account of those various federal programs. And then if you want even more detail after that, we'll, we'll come back again and go from there. So, I'm thanking Mrs. King for, for coming and doing it in that order. And I'm asking now for board consensus. Would you like to receive some more information on, on expenses for federal funds that we do receive?
Yes, um, let's look at, I know we have something scheduled for, for, is it June, July twenty-third?
The twenty-third is our next work session.
In July, when we come back.
Well, in July, certainly, we do have work... Well, on the July, certainly, we do have work sessions, we have June twenty-third is, is a work session, then June thirtieth is a work session.
And when is our next work session?
In July, July twenty-one.
After we come back from, 'cause I know we have Rose Coin going down and looking at the Title I dollars.
Well, that's June eighth through ten.
Okay, and then we're coming back.
June twenty-three and June thirty.
June twenty-third, how much time you think y'all would need?
Uh, what I would like to do is provide you just with the documentation, and then let you look at it, and then tell me whether you want some more detail or not, or whether you wanna go talk to somebody about food service, or Title I, or Title IX, or something like that, and we'll, we'll handle it as we, as we get it. I just didn't wanna go into a whole lot of research here without your consensus.
Okay, we have a consensus that we need that.
Yes, I think that would be real interesting, and I would love it broken out when it does have a program to maybe tell us who's heading up that program, and maybe a little bit about what that program does, because I know the Levee, I heard, I don't know if it's true or not, but I did hear that either the Levy or the Clay County Superintendent is even toying around with doing a, a budget that kind of excludes a little bit of the federal dollars, you know, just kinda looking at, see where they would be if they needed to exclude federal dollars, of course, that's not gonna be a problem, we already know that, but, um, you know, I really, um, that really would be interesting to see which are our most important federal programs, we could look at that and, and see, so, and I like your idea, Mr. Tomlin, of kinda giving this.
Get that in, in time, give, give us a few days or a week or so before you see.
And we can look at it.
Okay, Mrs. Superintendent.
Thank you very much, sir. Again, other comments about successful graduation ceremonies, uh, uh, a bit damp on Friday night, for those of us who are out in the rain, I appreciate you doing that. Again, for the district and for people who are looking on TV, almost three thousand graduates of Marion County Public High Schools this year, uh, the thousands of hours of community service hours that were mentioned, the millions of dollars, and it truly is in the millions of dollars of, of scholarship opportunity. This is certainly a perfect time to thank our parents, our teachers, our school administrators, other support personnel, district personnel, and then the fantastic supportive community that we have, that we do thank all the time, but probably not enough. We can't forget our foundation, and they coordinate our business partners for us, uh, the thousands of dollars, then locally sponsored scholarships that we received at the Night of Excellence, that's not just major contributors, but small scholarships, and then a special thanks to, to Honda of Ocala, which had a real special deal last night where we gave a senior with perfect attendance a brand-new car. Now, we, we can't thank business partners, and I don't know what the value of that is, I don't know, but that's a pretty, pretty big shout-out to that organization. In addition to having very good academic programs, we also have very good athletic programs here in, in, in Marion County, and all of our public high schools are members of the Florida High School Athletic Association. Florida High School Athletic Association also recognizes the academic success of those schools, and in today's paper, and I thank the Star Banner for publishing this, I, I do wanna read the headlines, "The Vanguard Boys Tennis Team Wins An Academic Honor," they do this quarterly. "The Vanguard Boys Tennis Team Reached The Regionals This Spring On The Court, On The Tennis Court, That Is, And They Were State Champs In The Classroom." The Knights Had The Top Overall Grade Point Average Among All Boys Tennis Squads In Class Three-A This Entire Season. The Forest Boys Tennis Team Was Twentieth In Three-A, Bellevue Twenty-Third In Two-A. In Girls Tennis, Vanguard Was Third In The State, Forest Eleventh, Bellevue Ninth, And Dunellen Twentieth. In Baseball, We Just Had A Very Successful State Baseball Tournament, Forest Was Second In Eight-A With A GPA Of Three Point Three, Vanguard Ninth In Seven-A, Dunellen Tenth. In Softball, The Boys, uh, Softball, excuse me, Girls, The Forest Were Sixth In Eight-A, Vanguard Third In Seven-A, Dunellen Fifth In Six-A, And Bellevue Eighth In Six-A. Our Kids Are Performing On The Court As Well As In The Classroom." I'm gonna keep going here, y'all aren't stopping me. In Flag Football, Vanguard Was Ninth, Boys Track Vanguard Was Twentieth In Three-A, And Forest Twenty-Sixth In Three-A, Girls Track Vanguard Twenty-Fourth In Three-A, And Forest Twenty-Sixth In Three-A, Bellevue In Twenty-Ninth. The Overall, uh, Results Across All Sports For The School Year Were Announced As Well. This Is Overall Sports. Leading The Way Were Locally, Locally Were Vanguard And Forest, Which Finished, Finished Fifth And Sixth In Class Six-A Respectively. That's A Combination Of All Their Sports. Westport Tied For Fifteenth In Class A, And Bellevue Was Twentieth In Class Five-A, And Dunellen Tied For Twenty-Fourth In Four-A. That's A Tremendous Praise For Those Student Athletes, Their Parents And Their Coaches And Their Administrators Who, Who Managed And Worked With Them. Another Reminder, Don't Forget The Memorial Day Celebrations At Our Veterans Park On Monday Morning, Fantastic Community Sponsored Event, I hope to see you there. And again, uh, Mrs. King has already mentioned that, that Friday's the last day of school. I think we've had an extremely, uh, successful school year, our summer programs, we're gonna take a week off, begin on June the sixth. Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
First of all, I just wanna say, Angie, it is nice to he- hear your voice. It is nice to have your voice back, and the young lady that's behind you, her name is Lisa, that's part of the Voice, but she's on the way back, and I just wanna say it's good to have your voice into the mix of things again. You're on the way back. I just wanna give some kudos to Westport High School. You know, I, most of you can look at this gray hair and say, "I've been around a long time," and this is the first time I've sat through a rain shower like that.
It was not a shower.
It was a rain.
Downpour.
Downpour, and the thing I would like to commend is those students, because you heard, said, "Don't fire until you see the whites of the eye." Those students sat through that rainstorm. All, uh, I think it was an hour and a half or something like that, and they did not blink an eye. Their caps were wilted. They did not, they, they stood and walked, every one of those kids walked to the end, uh, underneath the, uh, the goalposts, and there was not a break in the ranks at all. There was not any kid running for shelter. Those kids and Ms. Elsima, Elsima and her staff did an excellent job under, uh, under tremendous conditions, so I just wanted to say, hey, thanks, and I know out at Dunellen High School, Mrs., uh, Ms. Pasaka, I know you got drenched as well, and when, and when we look at what those kids are and what our kids are about, I think the weather, the weather was a true testament of, of what our, our principals and our kids really do, because they did not break, break, blink, uh, they did not break and run, but they did an excellent job, so I wanna congratulate them as well. We had a great school year, we still have to close it down, the most difficult part of a school year is this, at, is this time, so I just wanna commend all the people that's out there that's trying to bring us in, thank you. Okay, here we go. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have, have received our turn-in-the-placement list for, for students through May sixth, two thousand, uh, sixteen. Ms. Flutketter, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on a child's disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD sixteen dash, uh, two-eight and JD sixteen dash two-nine with educational services through the first semester of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. May I have a motion and a second?
I move.
It was so moved by Ms. Ely. And second by Ms. Borton. You're on a roll tonight, Ms. Borton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pass five zero. May I have a motion to approve, uh, approve the expulsion of student JD sixteen dash eighty-two, JD sixteen dash eighty-eight, JD sixteen dash eighty-nine, JD sixteen dash ninety, JD sixteen, uh, sixteen dash ninety-one E, JD sixteen dash ninety-three, JD sixteen ni- dash ninety-six, JD sixteen dash ninety-seven, JD sixteen dash ninety-eight, and JD sixteen dash ninety-nine with educational services through the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. May I have a motion and a second?
I move.
It was moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
And second by Ms. King. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion pass five zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD sixteen dash ninety-two without educational services through the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. May I have a motion and a second?
I move.
Second.
It was, it was moved by Ms. King, and second by Ms. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pass five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Moved by Ms. Ely, and second by Ms. Borton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pass five zero, the meeting is now adjourned.